I'd like to go ahead and call to order this April 16th, 2014 City of Brookhaven zoning Board of Appeals Work Session Meeting. We'll start with a roll call. Corey Self, Don Bolia, Glenn Byers, Hope Balkum, Jed Beardsley, Kent Gibson, and Tim Nama is present as well. All right. Do we have any organizational or procedural items to discuss this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we just want to bring to your attention that we have 10 cases next month, and so far we've heard from two board members that they will not be able to attend. So we're going to need to probably find out tonight for sure. Thank you. The ads go to paper tomorrow. Okay, so we'll need to send ads to the paper tomorrow, so if we're going to have to make any changes relative to acquiring, we'll need to know, so maybe we can find out tonight.
Okay.
Is this a good time to let you know that I may not be able to make it next month?
That's three.
That would be a very good time.
It'd be a very good time.
All right.
It's not certain yet. I'm trying to...
I intend to be here, barring some unforeseen circumstance. We'll have to check with the other members, but should we do that tonight in the regular meeting?
We need to do that, just to make sure, because we do have to send ads to the paper.
Okay.
We just need four, right?
Yes, we need four.
The other organizational and procedural item is, if you recall, last month, we made a change to our procedures relative to how special exceptions and appeals from decisions are heard by this board. I'm not sure if you all recall that, but tonight, one of our cases will need to follow that procedure.
Okay.
Could you refresh my memory real fast? I remember talking about...
You actually...
Just the screen buffer, right?
No.
No. It was the appeal of the decision over the lifting of the stop-horror quarter at Ashford Park.
Yeah.
So we had procedures that the parties agreed to regarding how appeals are handled. So the procedures were approved and adopted, and I can give you a copy, Mr. Chairman. But just so that you know, the appeal that we have on tonight first as unfinished business is the Pink Pony case, and the applicant or the attorney has been provided with the procedures and actually was here the night that you adopted the new procedures.
Okay, but that's a deferral. We've already closed the public hearing.
It's not the public hearing. It's actually the appellant and the city's position presenting their information to you.
Okay. So we don't need to reopen the public hearing portion of the meeting?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. So do we need to discuss those procedures at the start of the regular meeting?
We can do that.
Okay.
Or should we just do it now?
Why don't we wait till...
I think we've got to wait till the parties are here.
Right.
Okay.
So that's it for organizational and procedural.
Okay. Then, moving on to unfinished business, our first would be ZBA 1327.
And I actually, Scott Berthold is here, so I'm going to have him kind of give you a three-minute, Scott, if you can, kind of overview of that particular case.
Okay.
Good evening. Essentially, this is a deferred case that's come back to you from the October 16th, 2013 hearing, and there have been a couple of new developments. The applicant has taken further steps to complete their application for a lay-in disturbance permit. That application is still not complete, but what they originally appealed was a determination from the director that even if they were to complete their lay-in disturbance application, if they qualified as a nonconforming use, they would not be able to expand their building by the proposed almost 3,000 square feet, because that would expand the nonconforming use. They explicitly said it was to build dressing rooms and office staff for the adult entertainment that was going on on the property. When that issue arose, the evening of October 16th, for the first time, the applicant submitted a host of documents attempting to show that they were a nonconforming use in DeKalb County before the City of Brookhaven Incorporated. Because of that sort of late document dump, things were deferred to January and then again deferred to tonight. In fact, because of that, one of the rule or procedural changes that's going to be implemented or that have been implemented and that this new meeting will go under provides for the submission of items like that at least 14 days before the hearing. Now, that's just kind of a side issue. Basically, the city's position in the case is twofold. Number one, that they are not a lawful nonconforming use, or at least they have not proven that they are lawful nonconforming, because the theory previously presented was that they came into being and commenced the operation of their business in 1991 in DeKalb County before, or 1990, that's right, before DeKalb County adopted specific adult use regulations in 1991. However, just in the last two weeks, they've supplied the 1990 version of the zoning ordinance in effect in DeKalb County, and Section 27-146 of that zoning ordinance says that if there's any use that is not specifically permitted in this zoning code, then it's presumptively prohibited. And so, the city's position, number one, they have not met their burden of showing that they are a lawful nonconforming use. Number two, if they have met that burden, or if they somehow do meet that burden through further argument or presentation of evidence, then the city's position is expanding the dressing rooms and the office space to further the interest of the adult entertainment use is expanding the nonconforming use in contravention of Section 27-936.
Thank you, Scott.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
I have questions, if we can ask them.
Yeah, we can, we can, as long as we're not formulating, you're not formulating on this issue.
Yeah, I just have a question as to why it makes a difference whether the use, not under the code, why it makes a difference whether their use was legal nonconforming or not legal unlawful nonconforming. Why does the quality of the nonconforming use make a difference under the way the code is written?
Well, because if they were a lawful nonconforming use, they have restrictions on them with an exception. They can expand as long as it doesn't advance or further or increase the degree of nonconformity or in furtherance of the nonconforming use. If they were never lawful, then they're coming to ask to add on to an adult entertainment use that's outright prohibited, because it was prohibited in DeKalb County in 1990 when they opened, because there was no specific adult use provisions in the zoning code.
That's your opinion.
Yeah, yeah, right, of course. That's our theory. The second thing is when they adopted an adult use specific zoning regulation in 1991 in DeKalb County, they were only permitted in C2, and the land is zone C1. It's still zone C1, and in the Brookhaven Code, they're only permitted in C2.
So what you're saying is if we determine it was an unlawful nonconforming use, we don't get to the second question?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
What's the effect of the settlement agreement with the county?
None. The DeKalb County Superior Court ruled on December 23rd that that settlement agreement was ultra-virus in violation of Georgia law and that it was not binding upon the City of Brookhaven, so it has no effect. The only thing that it's potentially relevant to is a document that they've submitted that says, you know, a certificate of nonconforming use from DeKalb County, but to the extent that the document, to the extent that the settlement agreement is relevant to that document, if the settlement agreement were binding, the settlement agreement said, "When we say nonconforming use, the only meaning that that has is doing alcohol and adult entertainment together." So it doesn't have to do with zoning. In fact, the language of the settlement agreement, if it were binding on Brookhaven, wouldn't solve this question in their favor.
And not to belabor the point that Jed raised, but just so I'm clear on my... The difference between a legal nonconforming use and what I believe the city's position is, this is a nonlegal nonconforming use, is that it's just been prohibited from the beginning and somehow for 23 years, they've continued to operate, although they should not.
That's right. The distinction is, were they lawful at commencement?
Right.
That's the question. And through documents that they have supplied, which is a certified copy of the 1990 zoning ordinance in DeKalb when they opened, Section 27-146 says if there's a specific use that's not provided for in this code, it's prohibited. And so, when they opened, there was no specific use of adult entertainment, seeing where they could go in account.
How have they gotten their rental license?
That I don't know.
I think we're getting into trying the case right now, and I think we need to save that for the hearing where the applicant has a right to rebut.
I do have a question that's merely informational. The 12, the December 2012 decision of the Board of Commissioners to basically approve a similar application to what we're hearing now, how do you, or what do you think the legal effect of that should be?
None, because they've never produced a building permit from that. They had a resolution, but all that stuff that was done in DeKalb was, especially as of that date in 2012, was pursuant to the First Amendment Settlement Agreement, which was in 2007.
Right. The board was ruling on whether they could proceed with the expansion under the First Amendment Settlement Agreement, which is now off the table.
Correct, as far as Brookhaven is concerned, yes.
So we are tonight hearing their appeal of the Director's interpretation of the code, correct?
Right.
Correct, if we get to that question. I mean, the first question is, did Director Cannon make an administrative decision in the first place? And, you know, my personal feeling is that...
That we're trying the case when we shouldn't be right now. So let's try to cut that off.
Okay.
I think we've just got to give the applicant a chance.
We'll have plenty of this...
That's a timing issue.
Right.
That's just a timing issue.
May we move to the next case?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. ZBA 14-07, Patius Holmes.
Before Ben shares information with the board in the work session, we just want you to know that when it comes to the public hearing tonight, the caseload's very heavy. So we plan to say, "This is the case number. This is the request. We stipulate to the staff report, we've recommended X or Y, and we're not going to go into the particulars."
I think that's great. Anybody that has any questions can ask.
Right, and the report's been online. It's in the back of the room, so it's available.
Okay.
Fantastic.
Is that new, that you put a copy of each staff report in the background?
No, we do that. We do that.
All right, so ZBA 1407, this was a deferral case from last month in regards to 3165 Glenwood. Essentially, and I won't go get into the details again of that case, we received support, or I guess emails stating that those who were in opposition initially would like to no longer, would now support the case. And I believe one of the emails that you saw from Alan Powell has stated, I believe, five conditions that he would like the board to consider. But essentially, all those that were opposed are now fine with the initial, the original submittal for a two-story with the encroachment in the backyard from 40 feet to 18 feet.
Okay. All right. Moving on to new business, ZBA 14-08, Michael Patrick, increase of lot coverage and waive a lot merger requirement, Wimberly Road.
So there's two variance requests as part of 1082 Wimberly Road. One is to request for a waiver from the lot merger. Two is to increase the lot coverage from 35 to 62 percent. Staff felt that although it's two separate variances, essentially it's related, it's you can't have one without the other essentially. We felt that based upon the request, it appeared that the existing property may have benefited from the fact that, you know, the county required that law merger, and therefore, when the swimming pool came in after the fact, they definitely received the benefit of that additional size and lot. And therefore, based upon that, we have decided that, or we have recommended that the variance be denied for both requests.
Can you explain that? I'm sorry.
Sure.
They want to build a pool?
No, no, no. The pool's already existing. They previously got a variance from DeKalb, and from the records that we do have, it appeared that they were granted a variance to increase lot coverage from 35 to 41 percent. Okay. So essentially, I guess, and I can't necessarily explain how that all came to be and when the current property owner purchased the adjacent lot, but in essence, when the pool came in, obviously, the original variance did not include a pool for the lot coverage increase. So when the pool came in, I'm sure the county had to review for lot coverage as well. What we felt was that when the pool came in, essentially, the current owner purchased that adjacent lot and benefited from, you know, meeting that 35 percent rule in terms of lot coverage.
By adding the...
By adding that additional lot.
In other words, they clustered everything on one lot and utilized everything for both lots on one lot.
So that they tried to buy the lot to cure the...
No, I don't think, I don't think it was, no, I don't think they purchased to cure that issue of the pool. I think they purchased it prior to even bringing the pool into place. And again, the applicant may be able to explain that more thoroughly for the board.
Weren't both lots purchased at the same time?
From the records, I thought that was the case, from the warranty deeds that were submitted. But it appears from the letter of intent provided by the applicant, it was not.
Okay.
Okay, now that you've explained the facts, explain again why you opposed it.
So essentially, let me just bring this up for you.
The lot merger is, the waiving lot merger means it's going to be one lot if we do that, right?
No, it's currently one lot. Waiving lot merger means it was separated into two. So that's why we're saying it's all interrelated in the sense that if you do grant the waiver of the lot merger, essentially, we're creating a nonconforming lot with 62 percent of lot coverage.
I see.
In which they most likely benefited from the fact that it was merged.
So they want to...
They'd like to sell the lot next door.
Yeah, they want to sell it.
Yeah.
Like outside yard, they're going to... In some of the papers that they submitted, they showed other homes, lots on the street that had, that appeared to me to be, you know, approximately the same coverage, somewhere maybe even a little bit higher in terms of percentage.
Right, I mean, yes, go ahead.
So I know that that happened under a prior regime, so to speak, but is there any reason why that couldn't happen in this instance for these folks?
I mean, not necessarily. Essentially, that's what they're requesting, and it's definitely under the consideration of the board. You know, the information that they provide, I wish there was more significant or more defined information as to what that lot coverage is currently existing on those adjacent lots.
I agree. If they were using the adjacent property to sort of provide the basis when they were doing their calculations for lot coverage, and now they're trying to cut it off, it's like the guy that kills his parents and begs for mercy that he's an orphan. You know, I'm just not sure, I'm too sympathetic to that, although I don't know that what they're asking for at the end of the day is too different from what already exists there on the street. And I'm just trying, that's what I'm wrestling with.
Next case.
All right, next case. ZBA 14-09, HSC in town to reduce rear yard setback, average front yard setback, waive a lot merger requirement for 1628 Wayland Circle. I know you're going to, in the regular meeting, you're going to stipulate to the staff report. If we could just throw the site plan up for each case while we're doing it, that would probably help.
Sure, I'll try my best to remember that.
As you're working the clock and everything else.
Everything else that's going on with that, I'll try my best. So as it currently stands, it's a single lot. Again, this benefited, I guess you could say it's benefited from DeKalb County's lot merger requirement. It is planted as two separate lots, but it's owned by the same owner, so the contiguous ownership became merged. So essentially, they're asking for a lot waiver, a lot merger waiver, apologize.
And it's Lot 1 in the corner and Lot 26 to the south.
Essentially, to sell off that, I guess, to create two new homes, Lot 1 and Lot 26. For both lots, 1 and 26, they have requested the rear yard setback reduction from 40 feet to 30 feet. In regards to Lot 1, which is the one on the corner, we felt that the request went beyond the minimum that is required. And in lieu, we stated that, you know, we asked, or we recommended that the board deny that variance specific to the rear yard on Lot 1 for 40 feet to 30 feet, and in lieu, we have substituted for your consideration for the reduction of the rear yard setback to 35, just based upon our measurements for the site plan that's been provided to us. In regards to Lot 26, in addition to the lot waiver merger, there's that reduction in the rear yard and also a reduction in the average front yard setback. We felt that the average front yard setback, again, it's trying to accommodate a small little projection of the garage, which is on the bottom end of Lot 26. We felt that, again, that that minimal difference between what they're requesting and the average front yard setback, essentially, they could build a home meeting the average setback requirement, that the garage, there is enough room in the back if we were to grant the rear yard setback for 40 to 30 feet, which we're recommending, that they could extend that portion a little bit farther back to incorporate that garage meeting the average front yard setback.
Okay.
Is there already one house there, a house on the...
There is an existing home. It's really hard to see when it went out to the site. It was really hard to tell.
It's not that house?
No, it's a smaller house. There should be an existing, is there an existing survey?
There should be one of the...
I thought there was one in the package.
So this is what they'd want to do, as a grass, a wave of lot merger requirement.
On page 366 is where you're going to find the location of the existing home.
And on that, the survey on page 366, it's showing a 35-foot building setback line as per plat.
Right.
But on the submittal, it's showing a 30-foot setback line. Which is the correct one for this zoning district?
In this zoning district is 30 feet.
Okay.
So, you know, with the plat, it could have been platted with some, again, I don't know how it came to be with that 35, but the correct setback for that zoning district would be 30 feet for local collector's road.
Okay. All right. Let's go on to the next case. ZBA 1410, Bright Ventures LLC for 3020 Buford Highway.
So there's four, as part of ZBA 1410, there are four variances that have been requested. If you're not that familiar with this location, it's just, oh, sorry. This site plan will show you in grayscale what is existing currently and what they're proposing. So I think this would be the best site plan to review. Essentially, they have what appears to be an ethnic supermarket or grocery store currently located, centrally located to the site. Essentially, what they're requesting is to demolish that building and construct a larger building closer towards the rear property line. Essentially, what it backs up to is an entrance leading into an apartment complex, which is to the north and the west. The, and I'll quickly go over the first request, again, reduce the side yard setback facing Curtis Drive from 50 feet tonight to 39 feet. Essentially, that request is to accommodate that building along the northern end of the property.
That right there.
There you go. I wish I had one of those.
You want to borrow?
Yeah.
Sure, why not?
You can give them one.
So I quit pointing it at Glenn's papers and confusing him.
I'm used to sniper.
Oh, wow. You see? Oh, yeah. So essentially, that affects this portion of the building here. We felt that it wasn't, you know, asking beyond the minimum required. Essentially, it's going to create a larger open space here, which would accommodate for safer pedestrian access, as well as parking vehicle access onto the property. And again, we didn't necessarily feel that this was beyond the minimum that has been requested. Second, the reduce, reduction of the rear yard setback from 30 feet to 10 feet, again, this is the entrance leading into the apartment complex. It's heavily vegetated here. We felt that they're not encroaching further and would impact negatively the adjacent property.
There's no dwelling in that area.
There is no dwelling. It's just an entrance there.
And the entrance is setback away.
Oh, yeah. And C, reduce the transitional buffer. Essentially, the buffer here, again, not knowing exactly when this development was, came to be and what the requirements were at that time for the zoning ordinance, this portion here, the northern portion of that transitional buffer, is actually going to be extended out a little bit further. Currently, this is the location where they have their dumpster pads, so essentially, they're going to be replacing the dumpster pad and, again, extend the transitional buffer. Essentially, this portion here would remain the same. So again, there isn't a negative impact beyond what's currently existing. And again, the apartments are setback somewhat, you know, not necessarily far distant, but it is setback from that property line, where it shouldn't impact them negatively. And lastly, reduction on the site parking requirement, 72 to 45.
On that last point, Ben, wouldn't you agree that basically, the current buffer will be the same, except it's improved by putting a buffer where there's a dumpster pad and getting the dumpsters away from the apartments?
Oh, that's correct. And again, yeah, and it's all part of that extension as well and long disforestation.
And I also noticed that this plan would not take out any significant trees at all, I didn't think.
Well, yeah, in essence, it would be putting back vegetation to a place that's sparsely vegetated, you could say, especially along the frontage of Buford.
Yep.
And what was the reason for the reduction in parking spaces?
I am trying to get to that right.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize. Okay, well, I'll state, again, this is sort of a, it's a mix in terms of occupancy. The, it's going to be a two-story. The bottom floor is going to be occupied by a grocery, and the top floor is going to be office uses. In regards to the reduction in parking, we felt that, again, you know, when dealing with the parking, I believe a gentleman mentioned this during the Walgreens variance, parking essentially is the same process as variance, but per the ordinance is referred to as a special exception. There are three items that, I guess, criteria that they would have to meet. And essentially, this criteria, or this request would fall into the criteria, the character of the use of the building is such as to make unnecessary, the full provision of parking or loading spaces. So essentially, numerous times that staff has gone out to the site, never has the parking been fully occupied. It appears that it's definitely serving a specific population that resides along Buford Highway, and most instances, those who are going to be visiting the site would be walking on foot and not necessarily by vehicle. So we felt that the reduction in parking could be warranted.
Yeah, there were a lot of people walking up to when I was there, and there's also the buses that go along Buford Highway that carry a lot of people.
The only, the only question I had was there seemed to be some notes in the staff report about whether it was going from 80 to 45 or 72 to 45. If we were to grant a variance to 45, if that's the way the board decides, does it matter that we're granting from 80 to 45 or 72 to 45, or just that we're granting 45? matter that we're granting from 80 to 45 or 72 to 45, or just that we're granting 45?
45 is...
Okay.
And technically, the difference was between the letter of intent and the site plan.
Okay.
And we are going by the site plan, which references 45.
Okay.
And we did the math, and that is correct.
Okay. All right. Next case is ZBA 14-11 Wayne Nichols, an increase lot coverage from 35 to 53.8 for a swimming pool at 2508 Apalachee Drive and a setback for accessory structure.
Right, so initially, this was, the swimming pool was permitted by the city. If you, and I believe we provided documents, and it was provided by the applicant themselves. If you look at the, the site plan that was submitted as part of that swimming pool permit, it did not show all the additional impervious that surrounded the pool in itself. So essentially, and based upon this, the lot coverage that they provided per their site plan, that's what was used on, on the basis of approving that swimming pool initially by the city. This came about as a complaint from a resident nearby, in which we went and investigated, and it appeared that there was much more impervious, or impervious coverage, more than based, based upon, again, different from what we approved for the site plan. So essentially, we requested that the applicant come in for compliance. And if you've been out to the site, the, you know, the pool area can, it's not visible from the right away on, along Canucci. It's not visible from Apalachee, of course, because of the home. It won't be visible from the adjacent lot to the west with this detached garage that's been constructed there. So we felt that, again, based upon also the knowledge that, based upon the applicant has shared with us, that he has installed, I believe, three flow wells to accommodate for any stormwater drainage issues, we felt that this impervious would be appropriate. And essentially, the reduction in the accessory structure is just correcting the fact that it's, the spa was not taken into consideration initially. Because again, the language provided by the ordinance is specifically pertaining to the swimming pool. But in this case, we decided to include spa, again, because it's a comprehensive function of the pool itself. It's not a separate feature.
Was, was packet page 413, was that part of the original submission for a permit? Because that's, that's attached with it, right by the pool drawing.
Are you referring to page 412?
413.
No, I'm referring to 413.
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay, and, and what was submitted in 412 is, it's obviously a washed-out copy, but it, it appears to be the same survey that's showing on page 413.
Yes.
Okay.
But you, and the, as you can tell, there are discrepancies between what was approved and what's out there. As you can see, even the fence line, technically, per the correct survey that we have as part of this request, the fence is shown to be located right on the property line.
Right, but it, it's showing the impervious surface areas 36% before a pool was even added.
That was previously approved from the Cav. So this, this was built within the Cav, the house in itself.
No, I understand that. But if somebody's already at 36%, with a permitted home, and they come in for a pool application, how do you get a permit when you're already above the threshold for lot coverage? I mean, even if there's more impervious that was added than was originally shown, they were already at 36% when they applied for a permit.
Yeah. I'll state this. This, page 413, was not submitted along with the pool. And like you said, it is a faded copy that we received from the applicant. So I can't necessarily confirm if that's, you know, again, that 36%, I can't really confirm that for you. This was initially from the developer when it was done by the Cav. When this came in, I don't know what the, the impervious surface was shown.
It's the same survey. You can, you can tell it's the same survey.
It is, but what I'm trying to get at is, could there have been a reduction or a removal of existing impervious?
Okay.
That, that I can't really confirm based upon this.
You know, there's some of me that says that this is the first case we've ever seen Tom Porter support, so, you know, that should have a bearing on our...
And I'll be honest with you, technically, if they went to 36, we should have a case en file of a variance, but we do not.
Right. Okay.
So it's really hard for me to explain if there is a gap in between the time from the Cav and when they came to us with the swimming pool.
No, no, it does not, it does not show any bad intent whatsoever. It was just point of clarification for myself. I think so. All right.
What was the complaint? Was there harm as a result of it? Or was just somebody saying they've got more impervious than they, than they should?
It's pretty much that.
So they're getting corrective variance, is that it?
That is correct.
And the failure to grant would mean they'd have to tear out their pool.
Or some of the impervious structure in the backyard.
Yeah, or, you know, again, the board...
That wasn't approved to begin with, right?
Correct.
Well, yeah, they'd have to remove the entire thing, because they were already, they're already at 36% when there was no pool or patio there in the first place. So. All right, next case is ZBA 14-12 Alton Moss, increased lot coverage from 35% to 39% at 1380 Sylvan Circle.
So as you can see here, this is the actual site plan that was, this is a building permit that came through the city. And we approved them based upon sort of this bottleneck feature where it allows for a clearance of one vehicle, but essentially, you could park two vehicles out on the driveway. And it appeared that they went through this configuration in order to be compliant with the 35% lot coverage requirement. And in lieu of that, they wanted to essentially use a percentage for a larger home, in terms of lot coverage. And essentially, that's what they were approved for. This is what they're requesting. And I believe now they're wanting to have the ability to, for two vehicles to access driveway simultaneously. But we felt that, again, based upon what was approved, it was done, the design was configured with the knowledge of the lot coverage. And obviously, this was still provide, and if you actually go out to the site, if you've been out to the site, albeit there are older homes, but even some of the newer homes still have driveways that allow for access by only a single vehicle at a time. Therefore, again, we, again, this is what was approved with the knowledge of the fact that lot coverage is 35%. And again, they opted to use that lot coverage percentage to allow for a larger home. And we felt that based upon, again, what we approved and what they're requesting now, staff has recommended that the board deny the variance request.
What's the change in percentage from what was approved or what they're requesting?
35 to 39%.
4%.
4%.
4%.
Yes.
Would you say it's hard to find a hardship with that?
I believe so, just, again, before, because of the simple fact, you know, this is what came before us with a single vehicle access.
They basically want to just widen their driveway.
Pretty much. And again, I don't know if this design has been influenced because of whoever has, you know, whoever is deciding to purchase the property now, but initially, this was what was proposed, again, because...
They weren't the neighbors that complained about the earlier one, were they?
No, it wasn't. But like I said, even the newer homes that are out on the side.
Is the size of the home out of character with other homes built in the area? You say they, they elected to use the lot coverage for that large of a home, but is it any larger than any other properties nearby?
I wouldn't say it's any larger than what's nearby in terms of the newer development. But obviously, there, they had the opportunity to reduce the size of the home in order to increase the width of the driveway.
Or they could have come before us and asked for the variance at the front end with regards to that.
Correct.
Is, I'm sorry. Is there a... You know, the, the concern of the staff report is that there's going to be runoff or whatever. Is there anything from an engineering standpoint that could be done to minimize the effect of that? I, 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 just personally speaking, I, I've got five cars, and I, it's a constant, I, you know, I'd much prefer, as a neighbor, to have people parking in their driveway as opposed to parking on the street.
Sure.
So, I, I...
But with this, you know, again, just to sort of possibly answer that or address your concern, I mean, essentially, the way it's designed is that it allows for two vehicles to be parked, essentially, further up on the driveway. It's just mainly the access that's the issue. I, I believe in the letter of intent, they may have stated that it may be a safety, a matter of safety, but, but essentially, again, a car could come in, you know, comfortably and park on one side, providing another, you know, additional room for another vehicle to exit out of the property.
So they're not asking for more space to park more cars in the driveway? They're asking for more space at the beginning from the street to...
Correct. It's just extending that width.
I don't think that the width on that site plan is wide enough for a car to enter the driveway. It scales out at six and a half feet wide. I would say, is, is Mr. White going to be in the meeting tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
He's here.
Okay. You know, I think we could possibly discuss some alternative paving surfaces with him in the meeting.
Sure.
Such as an impervious driveway, or a pervious driveway.
Yeah, I mean, that's always a possibility.
Okay. Which, that wouldn't require variance. All right. Next case, ZBA 14-13. The Donagans, reduce the side yard setback from 10 feet to 5.2 feet. 3028 Mavri Road. I wasn't sure how to pronounce.
Definitely. I got it.
You're unusually happy tonight, Mr. Chairman.
No, I was laughing at my inability to first, to pronounce, I believe, Mrs. Donigan's first name, so I just skipped over it.
Yeah, I don't want to make an attempt either. So as you can see here, this is the existing condition of the site. And if you've been out there, that's an existing carport and adjacent to it, I believe it's a row of Leyland Cypress, possibly, or some type of pine tree variation. What they're proposing essentially is to maintain what, what you would, you know, consider an existing encroachment, you know, a separation of 5.2 feet from the property line. This is what they're proposing here. This dark line right here, if I can control this, this darker line right here is essentially establishing the same length or the distance from the side property line of 5.2 feet. So essentially, this, they're, they're going to push out the garage further towards the street to accommodate a two-car garage. And again, this is part of a, a comprehensive remodeling of the home in itself.
So not a wider garage, but a too deep garage?
Not a wider, but a deeper garage. They're not going to be going...
No, it is, it is going to be wider, but it's going to go back towards the house.
So they're tearing down this house or not?
No, they're not. But they're, they're basically taking their, their carport, their, and then they're bringing another base into this part of the house.
Right.
Oh.
So they're not, they're not asking to encroach any further than they currently are encroaching.
Right, the garage is going to be deeper.
Right.
Right, but they're not going to be encroaching closer to the side yard than they are already existing at 5.2 feet.
All right. ZBA 14-14 Ryan and Arena Connolly, rear yard setback variance and setback reduction for an accessory structure at 2423 Kusawati.
So there's two variances requested as part of this, for this property in 2423 Kusawati. One is to reduce the rear yard setback for a deck addition from, reduce the setback from 30 feet to 15 feet for a deck addition, which is shown there. And also to reduce the side yard setback for an accessory structure of a fireplace on that side from 10 feet to 3 feet. Again, the requirement for setbacks for an accessory structure is 10 feet from rear and side yards, and that's essentially what they're requesting. Staff has recommended that the board vote in favor of the reduction in the rear yard setback. And the reason why we stated that, again, there is an existing 15-foot sanitary sewer easement, which essentially provides for a perpetual setback, you could say. They can essentially construct a structure within this area because of the easement in itself. So that's the farthest extent in the minimal that they could request, and we felt that that should be fine, again, taking into consideration the existing location of a deck, and they're extending beyond that, and they wanted to add to that. In regards to the fireplace, staff has recommended that the accessory structure, reduction in the setback for the accessory structure be denied for the simple fact that there is ample room here. It came down to more of a convenience or more of a preference by the homeowner to locate the fireplace there. And another issue is, this is a corner lot here. The house that's existing here, the rear of the house faces the side of this property, and it may be a detriment, or not necessarily a detriment, but it may negatively impact the existing homeowner here.
Have we heard from them?
Pardon? No, we have not. We have not. But again, the relative...
Is your city councilman?
But when you go out there, though, and if you look from the street, and I can't remember exactly what that street is, but you can see, if you look on the side of this house here, it's fairly close in terms of like the proximity of the homes. And we felt that, again, there's ample open space here that they could have located or relocated the fireplace, and therefore, that's what we have denied.
Did, did they provide any sort of detail on the fireplace?
No.
Because it's 6 feet by 12 feet. I've never seen a fireplace that size, so I guess we can ask.
Yeah, it's one, my assumption is, it's an outdoor fireplace, it's going to be brick, frame, but...
I think they're really bought a brick.
Yeah. There you go. But again, the...
I went in the backyard.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, they were, they were in the yard, and we walked back and spoke to the homeowner and looked at him. But I didn't ask.
And they didn't submit anything to show, you know, what that fireplace would look like?
Mr. Beardsley, I'll be happy to tell you how I feel about it during the regular hearing.
If they, if they moved the steps and put the fireplace on that side, could they put the steps in the setback? Would that be an encroachment? Would they need a variance to put steps in the setback?
No, but there are limitations. It requires that, I believe, let me just check real quick for you. It would require a minimum of 5-foot setback from the side property line for the steps.
And, and they're, putting the stairs off the opposite side of the deck would require far fewer steps due to the grade, as you can see in this photo here. Maybe. All right. Moving on, ZBA 14-15 Ralph Riley, to reduce stream buffer from 75 to 50 feet at 2465 East Osborne Road.
Before Ben shares a little bit with you, I wanted you to know that this stream buffer variance came in after the moratorium was lifted and before the new stream buffer ordinance went into effect. So the previous ordinance governs this case, which is the reason for the terminology in here indicating that it's construed as anile by the staff and it ends up with the board. So this is the proper place for this particular case, and this is the last one that we have that falls under the old ordinance.
Okay. So again, this is a variance request to reduce the stream buffer from 75 feet to 50 feet. As you can see, essentially, the 50 feet was requested based upon sort of staff's review of this initially before... review of this initially before the applicant was to submit. And essentially, was to account for the additional disturbance that would take place as this is outlining the limits of disturbance. So we wanted to include that, it's definitely more than just the impervious encroachment into the stream buffer. Again, several months ago, could have been more, actually, we did approve a similar variance along East Osborne. It is a similar situation where it involved a deck essentially encroaching in there. If you look along the back end of these properties, again, what you see protruding is essentially decks. And we felt that, again, that would be a great impact into the stream buffer as it would allow for water to be, you know, essentially, it's a deck, the water would drain down and it will, there will be, you know, pervious coverage that are existing, that's existing within that area. And we felt that this is the minimum request based upon the request that has been made by the applicant, and staff has recommended approval or that the board vote in favor of this request. And again, as it slopes downwards, there's, I wish. Right. And I guess Bennett could discuss this a little bit further, but we felt that, again, if you look at the conditions, typically with a stream buffer variance request, we like to put in a condition related to stormwater and drainage.
Excuse me, I may be fighting a little bit of allergy, so I apologize. Yeah, the reasoning on this particular application is that the encroachment, I forget the square footage, I think it's listed on there, but it's not a large square footage and a portion of it is an elevated deck. And to impose or recommend a requirement for additional measures to capture the stormwater runoff and put it in a dry well or an infiltration trench or something like that, appeared to require an expansion of limits of disturbance to where it may have an adverse impact on the vegetation that's already there in the stream buffer. And the plan shows that there is a lot of trees, a pretty good distance between the area that's proposed to be encroached upon in the stream with a canopy coverage from trees. So the thought that I had was that simply limiting the limits of disturbance to basically hug the addition would be adequate as far as addressing the impacts of the encroachment.
What do the words "double row" mean on this drawing?
It's typical requirement that the silt fence that you often see at construction sites, there's a double row that is installed along the limits of disturbance to help provide additional measures to capture and protect the stream buffer from sediment silt advancing into the buffer. So you have five hundred thirty-two square feet, a portion of which is an elevated deck, that is the requested encroachment. The configuration of the lot and what's being proposed indicates that if we were to establish as a condition to have some stormwater storage and additional stormwater management on the site for what they're proposing, we'd have to expect that the limits of disturbance will be expanded into the stream buffer. And it just appeared to be a case where that might be getting diminishing returns, I guess you would say.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Is it still accurate to say the reduction is to fifty feet when those lines don't reach the fifty-foot buffer line? Aren't we granting them more than they need if we say fifty feet?
Well, we're saying that it would have to, it would have to occur in substantial concordance with that, that site plan which is attached, but what we're granting them to fifty feet to do is to actually build the house, so there's only an eighteen-foot intrusion, permanent intrusion, but the remaining seven feet would be construction access.
So they could, they could put the silt fence right up against the fifty-foot buffer?
Yeah, they could, they could move that silt fence another foot or two.
But, but we would look for, if somebody were to apply for a permit, that would be consistent with a variance if the variance is granted, and it would relate to this site plan, is that the limits of disturbance and the installed silt fence would basically align with what's shown on that plan and not go further.
And I guess the only other note I have is, I think Ben mentioned that we, we did approve one that was similar to this, except for, I think we took it all the way down to twenty-five feet.
Yeah, the way.
On East Osborne.
Right.
Just because the way the creek, the creek is the property line and it meanders along that street.
I know I'm making a technicality, but it seems like the way we've written the variance that they could later decide to expand the deck by eight feet and wouldn't need another variance. So, I mean, why wouldn't we say, okay, the fifty-foot reduction is for construction and disturbance purposes, but the limits of encroachment of the permanent structure would be sixteen point six?
Well, and I, my, my opinion of that is that that could be an issue if we granted this variance without any conditions, like the condition outlined in the staff report that says, "Development of the subject property shall occur in accordance with the site plan submitted on March fourth." So they, you know, if we granted this variance according to, and added that condition to it, they would not be allowed to encroach that any further.
Why don't we say in strict accordance?
Sounds good.
All right. Sounds good to me.
Obviously, you don't need any remediation because of the vegetation. Should there be some requirement that they can't remove that vegetation unless they put the remediation in?
They, they can't do any work inside the stream buffer.
They can't?
No, not.
They can't just go back there and clear it out?
Yeah. I mean, they could go in there by hand and take things out by hand.
Right.
But that's, that's the extent of it, you can't go in there with a tractor and clear trees and plant grass.
There could be some thirty-inch DBH, there looks like there's a thirty-inch DBH oak tree and a thirty-inch DBH pine tree in that area of disturbance. It appears those would be coming out. So do we need to make any specifications on that, or do we need to specify a tree save plan or anything like that as an additional condition?
That's going to be required with the building permit process.
Okay, so we don't have to specify.
And if there's a proposal to remove, then they would have to be, go through the process for that and provide appropriate recompense.
So this, this tree drawing they have done.
And I would venture to say that they're probably about twenty times the required amount of trees. As per our tree order. All right, next case is ZBA fourteen dash sixteen, Rock Haven Homes to reduce the rear yard setback from forty to twenty at twelve ninety Oaklawn Avenue.
Sorry about that. ZBA fourteen sixteen, again, the request is to reduce the rear yard setback from forty feet to twenty feet for construction of a new residence there. We, again, staff felt based upon the review and assessment of the site plan that there was ample room along the sides in accordance with the setbacks required of this property, where they could actually expand and make it wider, make the property wider, and essentially in lieu of them encroaching or the applicant encroaching into the rear yard further than is required. And again, we felt that the request went beyond the minimum that's required based upon the fact that, again, there is ample room to the side where if they were to reconfigure the shape of the footprint or the proposed structure in itself, that they could get something similar in terms of the size. But again, it would just require a reconfiguration of the design and the layout of the house in itself. And that's why staff has recommended that the board deny this request.
Is that a public alleyway behind it?
Not exactly sure, I'll be honest with you, when I went out, when I went out there, okay. So our chairman confirmed that it is.
I mean, it has been for years.
Yeah, and then it zoned M, what is the M zoning on the other side?
M is an industrial zoning district.
This is towards the end of Apple Valley.
Yeah, no, no, I know exactly where it is.
Right. Again, it's just staff's recommendation.
All right, last one is ZBA fourteen dash seventeen, Nelson Kunsunji.
Kunsunji.
Kunsunji, to reduce the front yard setback from one oh nine four to seventy-six six for a staircase at forty-one eighty-nine Oak Forest Drive.
Earlier in the day, I forwarded a petition that was given to me by Nelson Kunsunji. It was sent out to all board members by email. And if you read, unfortunately, the applicant would not be able to attend, but he does have someone that would speak on his behalf due to personal matters, so I just wanted to let the board know. So essentially, this request came before the board in November two thousand thirteen for a takedown rebuild of an existing home that was, I believe, in disrepair based upon a tree that fell upon the roof of the home. Essentially, the, although their architectural drawings showed the steps, the survey did not. The survey that they alluded to per the request, again, the original variance request was from one oh nine point four to, I believe, eighty-nine point four, which covered the encroachment of the porch. But recently, they came in to submit for a building permit, and of course, they showed the staircase, and we informed them that the staircase was not approved per the variance in November, and therefore, they would have to come before the board.
How far can they extend past the front line for an open, enclosed staircase?
Ten feet.
Okay, so if this was a ten-foot-deep staircase, they wouldn't be coming in front of us.
And again, it's, what we're, the way staff would interpret it would be that the steps in conjunction with the porch could only extend ten feet beyond the average front yard setback, which is one oh nine point four.
Okay.
So initially, this should have been shown on the site plan, it should have been covered under that request from that variance in November. But again, the site plan did not show the steps incorporated as part of that request. And unfortunately, they had to come before the board again, seeking a disvariance. Based upon that, like I said, although it wasn't shown on the site plan, it was shown on the other architectural elevations and all that, and therefore, they have the support of adjacent neighbors directly across as well to the, to the right and left of them. And we felt that, again, it was sort of something that should have been covered up front, caught up front in November, and staff has recommended approval of this variance.
All right. All right, we'll thank everyone very much for expeditious jurisprudence tonight in advance, and we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting.